I very much appreciate people coming out to have our second public input visioning session around our facilities. So if you weren't able to join us the last time we got together, about five years ago, we had engaged the services of Dora Whittier Architects to come into the school system and to take a look at our existing facilities, to do a top to bottom assessment of the facilities, and help us put together a short term, which is our 10-year capital plan, and then also look to possible new school building projects in the years to come. So that's what we call our long-term capital plan. So they did that. We created a 10-year capital plan. It was timely after five years to have them come back in and kind of assess the work that we've done, make sure that we actually completed what we set out to complete, and help us reprioritize and re-phase the next 10 years of capital projects that have to take place in the school department. So Dora Whittier came back to do that. At the same time, a second facet of their work this time around is to reassess our long-term plan. We had kind of embarked on an application with the Mass School Building Authority for a potential new high school project, and we wanted to see if that was still the option we should be pursuing, or should we be looking at an elementary or a middle school option as well, just based on our application over the last four years, the condition of our facilities, which we'll talk a little bit about later on tonight, and kind of help us focus for that next long-term project. At the same time, this is new, we asked them if we were to change our long-term project, say, from high school to a middle school or elementary school, we still know that that's going to be five to eight years down the line before you actually were approved, you went through the whole process, you built a school and you opened it. Is there something we could do with our existing school facilities over that period of time, kind of on an interim plan, to make some different grade level adjustments or improvements to the education program? So that's a new twist that they're looking at, and we're going to talk a little bit about that tonight. So without further ado, because I do again want to be respectful of people's times, and I don't want to duplicate what Jason or Michelle might say, I'm going to introduce Jason Boone from Dora Whittier Architects. He's going to be kind of our head facilitator here tonight, working with Michelle Rogers also from the firm, and we're going to let you take it away. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Lang. I'll just echo Dr. Lang's sentiments that we're really excited that the room is full tonight. It's great to see everyone out. He also mentioned that we want to be respectful of your time. We think we're only going to take up between 60 and 90 minutes, hopefully not the full two hours, to get you back to your homes in a timely manner. Jay mentioned a little bit about the scope of work we're undertaking this time, and for those of you that were here last time, these first several context slides will be a repeat, but with all the new people in the room, we felt it was important to repeat some of this information. So we are updating that capital improvement plan. We've taken a look at an updated enrollment forecast, and we've updated all of our capacity analyses and sort of MSBA comparatives related to enrollment. We are exploring a wide range of grade configurations, and we're going to apply full master plans to those explorations and ultimately cost estimate those. And finally, as Jay mentioned, maybe a priority project for the MSBA may fall out of this process. In the past, it had been the high school. We'll talk about that in just a few minutes, about whether or not that's the way to move So here's the timing on that scope. We started in September. We've done some analysis work. We had our first public information session last month. We're into exploring emerging options at the moment. In fact, over the last couple of weeks, we've met with middle school faculty and staff. We had a really terrific session with middle school students, where we were posing some of the same questions we're going to pose to you, to those guys, and they had really valuable feedback. And then we're going to sort of wrap up our work next month and ultimately submit a report of our findings shortly after the first of the year. So that's the timing of this particular study work. Our agenda for tonight is fairly simple. We're going to give everyone a refresher of what we did five years ago, how we've updated that information, and some of the conclusions that we came to at that time. And then we're going to have an exercise around some master plan options that are starting to emerge. We're going to couch those as not set in stone, and we haven't had a chance to hear any feedback on those from anyone yet, so we're going to talk about those. And then at the end, we're going to ask people to identify what they think is the preferred choice as a sort of a litmus test for those in the room tonight at the end. So in terms of the 2016 master plan, Dr. Lang mentioned that we did a full assessment of all of the buildings, and that led to this sort of 10-year capital improvement list, all the roofs and windows and door handles and all of those kinds of work that needed to be addressed to improve the facility condition across the district. And this is what our analysis revealed at that time. The way you read this chart, each column is a school building, and each row is a series of systems or code compliance issue. And so the more red the circle, the worse the condition. So in a quick eye sweep, you might be able to tell that some of the facilities that are in the worst condition, the Westlands Community Ed Building, South Row, and then it's sort of a toss-up, you know, McCarthy, Parker, some of the elementary schools. In a future slide, in just a couple of minutes, we've sort of synthesized all of these colors into a single color for each one of the school buildings to try to help simplify that. So we did a comprehensive analysis of the facilities, and then we executed a capacity analysis. This information has been updated based on the current enrollments. And so the way you read these diagrams, imagine the black rectangle is a container, right, a square footage container. And if the color is spilling out of the container, there's not enough square footage there based on MSBA guidelines, right? It's important to note that those containers in this graphic do not account for modular classrooms, right? So we'll talk about those a little more in just a minute. So at the elementary level, you can see that there is some overcrowding. At the middle schools, there's a little bit of room at McCarthy, and Parker is overcrowded. And then at the high school, it's actually the least undercrowded building in the district. And overall, if you factor all of those things together, sort of right at the peak of capacity across the whole district. Another type of analysis we performed five years ago was a room-by-room MSBA comparative analysis. This is just a sample of Byham Elementary School. The same color coding applies, so red is undersized relative to the guideline, yellow is about right-sized, and green is oversized. And this is pretty typical, we didn't include all of the comparative analysis in this slideshow, but this is pretty typical of what your buildings look like relative to MSBA guidelines space by space. When we put all of this information together to sort of give us a profile of each individual building, what you've got here is the current enrollment, again, this has been updated, that capacity by square footage, a capacity by classroom count without the modulators, and then a capacity count, or excuse me, a capacity by classroom count with the modulators. So if you look at, if you concentrate on those three numbers, right, the elementary schools are overcrowded by square footage and by classroom count if you only factor in the sort of permanent construction. But the modulators have actually made a big difference, right? This one has gotten really close at center, right? And then the other elementary schools, when you incorporate the modulators into that calculation, it has really relieved some of the pressure across the elementary district. This next column is that facility condition, again, the more red, the worse the condition. And then this is a summary of that MSBA comparative analysis. So what you're seeing here as a pie chart is the percentage of spaces that are in each color. So if we look, if we were to compare the four elementary schools, you know, South Row might rise to the top by that analysis as being in the most need of the elementary schools. Then if we look at Westlands, right, similar story, only the pre-K program is there, and there are some community education programs there as we understand today. At the middle school level, here's the McCarthy line. You can see that by all our calculations, it doesn't have any overcrowding at the moment, but it does have some facility issues and some spaces that are below the MSBA guidelines. Parker is a little different story. Again, the modulators there have really helped, but unlike the elementary modulators, those modulators are getting older. And so without them, that existing building is experiencing some overcrowding, and about half its spaces are undersized relative to guidelines. And then we look at the high school. Current enrollment, capacity numbers are much higher than the current enrollment. The facility condition is actually in the best condition of all of your elementary buildings. And even though it has a really high percentage of spaces that are below the MSBA guidelines, there are more of them than you might get if you were to build a new high school. So it's sort of a mixed bag at the high school level. And so here's a summary of those findings. In general terms, the district has done a really good job, and the town has done a really good job, of taking care of the buildings physically. There are lots of things that could be done to improve them, but in general, they've been well taken care of. I mentioned those modular classrooms has really made a difference at alleviating overcrowding, but they wouldn't be considered a long-term 50-year solution. We talked about the elementary schools. All four of them have needs, but Byham, Harrington, and South Row in particular, we would consider candidates for renovation or replacement at some point in the future, right? They're getting near the end of their useful life. If we were to do them in sequence, Center School would probably fall at the very end of that sequence. Parker Summerlee is a candidate for renovation or replacement, as is McCarthy, but with the caveat that even though it's a slightly older building, it is in a little better condition, both from a capacity point of view and a physical condition point of view than Parker. And then finally, Chelmsford High School, again, it could benefit from some improvement, but of all the buildings in your inventory, it's in the least physical need and the least capacity need of all the buildings in your district. And so we took all that information five years ago and had several meetings like this, where we identified what the key issues to discuss would be. At that time, full-day kindergarten was a really big issue, and ultimately, what came out of our work at that time was to put the modular classrooms at the elementary schools, and the district has now implemented full-day kindergarten. The other issues continue to be a focus of discussion. What's the right grade configuration? Where does pre-K go? What's the priority project? Some of you might remember this kind of exercise that we did at those meetings, where we are trying to place classrooms across the district and maybe think differently about where everyone is located. Ultimately, some master plan options were developed. These flip charts, for those of you that remember that all those years ago, we characterized them, and then we took a straw poll of where people's preferences lay. This is the shortlist of those options, and the way you read this is one master plan option is across horizontally. So essentially, what is represented here is one option of the many that there were that affects each grade level. So this one was sort of an early childhood option with an addition at Parker. This one is a middle, upper elementary school scenario. This one was a middle school scenario. That one was a seven, eight scenario, and the bottom one was an early childhood center and high school scenario. And based on a lot of discussions, ultimately, the priority project at that time was identified to be this early childhood and high school project for these reasons. It would result in a state-of-the-art high school facility. It would allow fifth through eighth to be combined potentially at the existing high school building, and it would allow everyone across the district to benefit from the project. It may also offer the ability to repurpose either Parker or McCarthy as a fifth elementary school, or as an upper elementary school, to help alleviate the overcrowding that existed at the elementary levels. And so as Dr. Lang mentioned, that statement of interest was submitted to the MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, three consecutive years in a row, with no traction from them in terms of inviting the town and the district into their grant program. We never quite know why the MSBA makes the decisions that they do. What we do know is that it's a competitive grant program, and so they're comparing the needs of the priority project here in Chelmsford with the needs of the priority projects applied across the Commonwealth. And so it's very likely that they said, all right, well, we understand that there's a need here, but there are other facilities in other towns that have a greater need. They could have also said, well, based on the data that you've given to us in your master plan, it looks like you might have other needs even inside the district that are greater than the high school. And so to date, that high school as a priority project hasn't gained any traction, and that's part of what we want to talk about tonight. So with all of that background context, let's pause here and see if anyone has any questions. I'm going to ask you to use the microphone so that they can hear you at home.
I just wanted to make sure that I'm understanding it correctly, that the Westland School seems to be the facility that needs the most work?
It has a lot of physical condition issues, yes. It's also the smallest of the buildings in the district's inventory, and I think our disposition has been that the ultimate goal might be to actually get pre-K out of that building and into one of the elementary schools, or as part of an early childhood center, as was demonstrated in the priority project from the first master plan. And so I don't think there's any consideration currently for making Westlands the priority project, simply because it's in the worst condition, it doesn't have any overcrowding issues, and it's only serving one grade at the moment, if that's what you're asking. Other questions? Silence means everybody understands perfectly. Just get us to the discussion. Okay, so, given the fact that the high school hasn't received any traction at the MSBA, part of what we want to discuss tonight is what are the other possibilities? And should we pursue those other possibilities? As our support for those other possibilities. So what we're going to share is not a full list of master plan options, but what we've come to realize is that, for whatever the reason, the high school is not likely to gain traction even going forward with the MSBA process. And even though the elementary schools are in the greatest physical need and have the greatest overcrowding, they may be less likely to get public support because we could only do them one at a time. And if we did them sequentially, we may have a situation in town where who gets to go first, right? And what happens if we don't actually get to the other ones? So that's one of the things we want to ask you about tonight. Do we have that sort of sentiment, that understanding, correct? At the middle grades, those buildings are, they're certainly not in terrible condition, but they're more likely to get traction at the MSBA than the high school, particularly Parker, because it has both overcrowding issues and facility issues, and should we focus our attention there? In terms of goals, whatever that first project is, they remain the same from five years ago. Try to impact every student in the district by having the priority project be the entire grade level for whatever this new project is going to serve, right? So if it was a nine through 12, it would be serving all grades nine through 12, not half of the town in one high school and half the town in another high school. That objective of serving every student still remains. To the best of our ability, resolve other issues that exist, like overcrowding at the elementary schools, in one fell swoop, if that's even possible. And then finally, to set the district up in a way that this longer-term master plan of addressing other buildings in the future, that we're well positioned to do that. So with that context, we're going to focus our attention on five different possibilities tonight. And they all have to do with Parker being the focus of the statement of interest. We want to be careful to make sure everybody understands that by focusing our attention at the Parker facility tonight doesn't necessarily mean we're focusing on the grades that are there currently. So in these five, I'll quickly go through, describe these five possibilities, and then I'll pause again for questions. So in the first possibility, what you see is Parker, on the Parker site, a project that's going to serve all grades seven through eight across the entire district. And potentially, that means that McCarthy would need to serve grades five and six. And that downstream, the existing elementary schools, until they're able to have their own project, would continue to serve grades K through four. A second possibility is sort of the reverse of that, where the priority project would serve all grades five through six across the district. McCarthy would serve seven and eight, and again, the elementary schools continue to serve grades K through four downstream. A third possibility is to take both of those grade groupings and execute a project that has both of them, all grades five through eight, under one roof. When we had this discussion with students and with the middle school faculty, one of the things they said was, wow, that's a lot of kids. And that the only way that that would have any traction is if it were sort of a two schools under one roof strategy. But downstream of that, what that could mean is McCarthy could either temporarily serve as a fifth elementary school, therefore alleviating the overcrowding at the elementary schools, or serve as swing space while you're executing a second, third, and fourth project at those elementary schools to renovate or replace them. So you can imagine, for example, in this scenario, South Row kids moving into McCarthy while the South Row project is underway, and then when it's done, they move back. So you execute this over a great number of years, and then you decide what happens to McCarthy at the end because you don't need it as an elementary school anymore. It's just temporary swing space. This fourth option is a project that would serve grades four through six. Even in the first master plan, there was some interest in altering the grade configuration so that they were more grade level focused, a couple of pre-K twos, a couple of three through fives, maybe a four, five, six. So that's what this option explores. And what happens downstream, you see McCarthy would serve seven and eight, and then the remaining elementary schools would either be K3 or pre-K3, because now we're taking a whole grade out of those elementary schools and providing more space there for the grades that are remaining. And then the final scenario that we're going to discuss tonight is a six through eight scenario, again, all grades across the entire district, and it has a very similar effect downstream, except instead of the remaining buildings being pre-K or K4, fifth grade would get pushed back down into the elementary schools, and at the end of this, you would likely have five town elementary schools rather than four. So let me pause there and see if there are any questions about what is up on the screen right now, again, knowing that this isn't necessarily the full range of possibilities. Yes?
Just to clarify, each one of them has a option you have already studied and have some scores in terms of overutilization, underutilization of facilities, also as a potential So you showed us how the undersizing, oversizing of the various classrooms were in each of these sites, but for each one of these options you're proposing, do you have an impact on that map?
Yes, so let me, let me, let me see if I can express an answer to that. So this is a little hard to see, but what we've done, if you can see, this little number on top of each one of these boxes represented the resulting enrollment once we changed the grade configuration. So even when we're talking about these options that are on the screen for tonight, those same calculations have been conducted so that we know, for example, that when the whole master plan is completed, we shouldn't have any more overcrowding issues, that we should have the right number of students in the right number of buildings, if that's what you're asking. Other questions? Yes?
How would that work for the first two options with the elementary schools? Because I don't think they were addressed there in this major overcrowding.
You got me. So part of the reason we didn't sequence all of these options is that we don't have all of the answers yet. So in this, in these first two scenarios, where the leftover middle school, the one that isn't the focus of the priority, is if it's not serving elementary students, it's not available to serve as swing space because it has other kids in it. So what we would have to do is we would have to find other solutions to that swing space, whether that means, you know, more modulators on the, you know, take Harrington for example, on the field somewhere near the Harrington Building, or at South Row, we find, you know, someplace to move those kids while construction is taking place, or we build on a site that's not exactly where the existing building is. All of those are possibilities, we just haven't studied them yet. Other questions?
Question at the bottom.
Yeah, David Kajiza.
So, so the data for your enrollment, that's from five years ago, but we've increased housing in this town a lot in the last five years.
Actually, the enrollment has all been updated.
It has been, okay. That was my question. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay.
So you may be going to get to this, but are there any options where, you know, updating, well, I guess they all are Parker-focused, so we're going to update Parker extensively. So there's not going to be additional monies left to do updates to other schools. We're sort of all in on Parker. Are these options, right? No?
Yes, yes, but, yes-ish. That's one I've not used before. I'm going to steal that, yes-ish. So Dr. Lang mentioned that there may be some financial investment in the short term that could improve facilities depending on what the long-term decision is. What we can tell you is that the MSBA, if you were to partner with them, only lets you do one project at a time, and the funding has to be independent of anything else you're doing in the district. In other words, let's say you have a $10 million project, the MSBA isn't going to let you borrow $50 million and spend some of it on their project and some of the rest of it on something else. They have to be independent of one another. So there may be other work that could happen, but the MSBA only lets you do one at a time. Any other? Great.
Just going to add a little bit of context to the original high school application. So we were dealing with a couple of different constraints. One was educationally, you know, kind of what makes sense as far as grade level configurations and things along those lines. We were also concerned about financing the project. And eventually, even if we get through the MSBA application process, they invite us into the pipeline, we still need to get community support for, you know, town meeting, and then let's say a budget override or whatnot to be able to fund the project. So we're a little concerned about the town's capacity to build, you know, school after school after school and how that would pan out. At the same time, we also knew that if we had projects, and this is just in the back of my mind, that are really specifically going to enhance one school community and not be really benefiting the whole town, would we have a less likelihood of getting town funding for that? It's just the practical nature of things. So part of the reason that we looked at the high school project as like a singular project that we were trying to get the town behind, if it came to that point, was that obviously all of the kids in town would benefit from the new high school. The kids currently at the two middle schools could benefit from really our newest facility, which is the current high school, so they would then get a new facility. Parker or McCarthy, you know, could then become an extra swing elementary school and alleviate the overcrowding. It didn't do anything to, you know, help the existing four elementary school buildings facility-wise, but it helped on the overcrowding piece. And then that let us kind of step back and figure out, okay, what do you do after that particular project? I think our concern was if we just went to the MSBA and even the town and said, all right, we're going to keep the grade levels the same, and we just want to build a new McCarthy, and we want to build a new Parker. If only half of the town is going to benefit from that, what type of support are we going to get when we actually go to the ballot blocks? It almost becomes worse at the elementary level, because then you've got a quarter of the town benefiting if we do a new South Row, if we do a new Byham. And I just don't think for practical purposes, we'd get enough support around that. So that's why we're trying to figure out a school project that could be touching the whole town, so that if it was a grade level reconfiguration, if you at least had all of the students in town going through that school at the same time, we may be able to get the town-wide support. And that was kind of the rationale. I think we also have to look at, long-term, even if we do, say, one project, we still have some aging buildings. So this is going to have to be a multi-school approach, but what would be a significant project in time that we could kind of knock out that would benefit a significant number of kids and then allow us to kind of regroup and figure out a strategy for years after that? But I wanted to kind of just tie that piece in, because that's why we did originally kind of look at the high school project, because in one singular project, you could really touch a lot of projects within the town.
Okay, Michelle and I will be floating around. Oh, yes.
I just have a question on pre-K. The trend seems to be towards universal or expanded pre-K, but yet of the five options you show for the Parker options, I only see two of them that involve pre-K, and I'm sort of wondering what happens to of wondering what happens to pre-K in the other scenarios.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good question. When there are more than four elementary schools in the district, the capacity of those existing facilities are such that you could fold pre-K into one of them. And what's not represented up here is that even though McCarthy is a seven, eight in this project, and there's four elementary schools, when you get to these projects, you could right-size them to have pre-K be in one of them. But we haven't speculated to date about where pre-K goes in any but those two that are represented up there so far. So it's assumed in the other ones that pre-K would remain at Westland's in those scenarios at the moment.
That's current pre-K, doesn't count for expanded pre-K.
They can't care again without them.
Again, my question's more about expanded pre-K. If there is this trend, and we keep hearing about it, you know, at federal levels and state levels, universal pre-K, how does that fit into any of these options?
So if, if universal pre-K were to become a reality in the short term, some of these options would accommodate that better than other options. And it would be the ones that we've identified with pre-K, where McCarthy is a large enough building that not only could it hold the current pre-K population through fourth grade, but it could accommodate some expansion of the pre-K program. The other ones would have to occur either over time, or we'd have to develop a different strategy to accommodate universal pre-K, probably in a similar way that full-day kindergarten was accommodated, if it, if it happened quickly. Yes?
Just to continue on with the pre-K question, if universal pre-K does happen in the next few years, would it be a possibility or an option to have it, pre-K move into more than one elementary building? Because currently, at the Chelmsford Integrated Preschool, there is a waitlist because it's not a mandatory enrollment, so it's not overcrowded because they've stopped enrolling children.
What, what the data suggests is that the current elementary schools in their current configuration could not absorb pre-K into them. You would have to execute some sort of project at those elementary schools in order to allow pre-K to move over there.
Into multiple schools?
Even into one of them, right? Because all four of them are currently overcrowded to one degree or another, and they all have modulators currently, so there just isn't room for them in the current configuration. Like I said, some of these options would better accommodate changes in pre-K location than others.
Thank you. My question is kind of in regards to this program that we're seeking funds for the grant. We applied three years for the high school and didn't get it, so we're changing our approach. But before we do this whole group think, what is going to be the plan going forward, right? Let's say we go for Parker, and now it's three years later and we haven't gotten it. Do we have a backup plan? Because it seems kind of a moot point. Where else, you know, can we get the money from? It doesn't matter what we want to do if we can't actually secure funding for it.
So there, there are lots of examples where towns in the Commonwealth have submitted for something multiple years in a row and have not been successful. And it entirely has to do with how the competitive grant program works, right? If there are other districts that are in greater need, they're more likely to get invited in. And the numbers are, there are about 80, between 80 and 100, statements of interest submitted every year, and somewhere around 10% of them, 10 to 12% of them get invited in. So if they're, if the, if the town submits statement of interest even for a different school, there's always a possibility that you're not gonna get invited in. I don't know if you, Dr. Lang, wanna comment on what a backup plan would be?
No, I mean, with regard to the application process, even for the high school, and again, I don't think we're at the point where we're saying we're not gonna, we'll fold with that, it's just we're putting other options on the table to consider. It is not uncommon to take, you know, five-plus years of applying to actually get traction for your project. So yes, we have three years we've submitted, we haven't received it. It's not totally uncommon, again, just because of the size and scope of a high school project. For us as a community, doing the project with the MSBA, as opposed to, let's say, we switched to the Parker or McCarthy and it didn't pan out, we want to do it on our own. There's nothing stopping us from doing that, except finances. And we would be eligible for Ballpok, 50% reimbursement from the state if we build a project. So, I mean, a high school these days are 200 million plus. That's a huge number. And, you know, it's gonna be difficult convincing, and being able to fund half of that, as it stands. Obviously, the middle school's a little bit less, and elementary's a little less than that. We're still talking significant funding. I do think without the MSBA assistance and partnering with the project, it would be very difficult for the, for the town to fund on their own. But I, you know, I, even if we do switch the application to an elementary or middle, I don't think it's just a given that the first year we submit, we'll get it. It could be a couple of years to try to get traction on our project. I think what we've been talking about is just what is the, what do we have a better likelihood of being able to attain? And if we know that, bless you, if we know that the, that we're just gonna continue having trouble, say, at the high school, if we come to that resolution, does it make sense to shift gear and try one of the other two where we can make a more compelling argument on the condition of the facility as well as the overcapacity? Because that is another category that you can qualify under. So we certainly can make a more compelling argument on those two fronts with the elementary or middle schools in the district, where we can't at the high school because we do not have any overcrowding, and that is the building that's actually in the best shape in town because it's our newest building. And so at the high school, like if that was our application, we're going up against every other high school in the state that basically wanted to submit an application. And I will tell you, and I've told the others, I'm not surprised if the schools that get picked, they're in a lot worse shape than we are, and the pool gets reset every year. So you're always up against the new year's pool of applications. It's not because you apply one year, you're kind of on the list. It gets cleared out at the end of the year, you have to reapply, and you have to start all over, and your competition is whoever happens to apply that year. So we're just trying to figure out, you know, do we have a better likelihood and chance of getting traction on a different level project? Because I think that 50% partnership for the funding is gonna be significant to the town.
So we created handouts out of these two slides with the five grade configurations and emerging options that we want to discuss tonight, and the instructions on the reverse side. What we'd like you to do is take about a half hour and discuss all of them at your table. See if you can identify advantages and disadvantages to each. And ultimately, at the end of the 30 minutes, we'd like you to put a sticker on the one that your particular table prefers. Then we'll have everybody report out, and we'll post them around the room. Questions about what we're asking you to do? Yeah, David?
Actually, an unrelated question. So, in order to do this, in order to do that, I think we need some information. You said that Parker's actually in worse shape than McCarthy. Can you characterize, like, the differences between those two structure, or those two facilities?
So from, from a facilities condition perspective, I'll go all the way back to that slide, they are close. Right? So when we summarize all of them, all of those different systems and characteristics, the facility conditions are, are almost the same. If we were to look at the other chart, there's a lot of nuance there. There were a few more red circles in Parker than there were in McCarthy. The big difference is this, right? That Parker has overcrowding issues and McCarthy doesn't. Right? So that, that's why Parker is a little bit ahead of McCarthy in terms of its, its conditions. Okay? All right, we'll be floating around. Go ahead and get started. If you have questions, just let us know. Okay. We love that there's been a lot of spirited discussion. That's exactly what we're hoping for. What we'd like to do is have you report out one group at a time. We want, now, we know we had some problems following instructions on the paper activity, so I'm gonna try to give clearer instructions for the reporting out activity. What we'd like you to do is give us just the highlights, and then tell us of the five things that we're looking at tonight, which, which one is your preference? And then we want you to post your results somewhere on the wall. So we'll start with this, we'll start with this group over here. I'm gonna hand somebody the microphone, give us your highlights, tell us your preference, and then post your results on the wall.
Do you want to put it first? Okay.
Can I hold it?
I got it. I can read it. So our group looked at option five, that's the one we liked better. Part of the reasons we were thinking of what was best developed-
Remind everybody what option five is.
That's fine. That is, the Parker's the new school with six through eight. McCarthy became the pre-K through five, and all the other elementary schools were K through five. The reason why we liked that is we were looking at developmentally what was best for the students. We thought that a break between six and eight was the best for middle school. We were kind of concerned about middle school. It was best developmentally for those grades to work, and they also have finally working on the same schedule. The other thing is that we were, oh, we were concerned with pre-K. We wanted to make, we knew that was kind of coming down the line, so we wanted to make sure we picked one that had that option. Finally, also, we also thought the curriculum from elementary, the fifth grade was more aligned with the element, elementary school curriculum, so we wanted to keep those guys together. So that's why we kind of put for that one, as opposed to the new high school, but that's okay.
Any highlights from the ones you did select?
I don't think so. Did we have any highlights that we liked? No. We tried rearranging it, and we didn't, that was the best option after we, yep.
So why don't you guys find a spot on the wall, hang up your results?
Thank you.
Does this group need more time?
Nope.
Okay, who's gonna be your spokesperson?
Well, I can write and talk. Okay, we went with option three, which was Parker being fifth through eighth, and then McCarthy, pre-K through fourth, and then the remainder schools, K through fourth. And we felt that including pre-K was going to be essential, so we might as well be looking at what's not facing us now, but all the new people coming in, this is gonna be an issue. It was better collaboration at the middle school level, which is where we, if you look at even some of our grades and where our reporting is right now, that, that's where we're the weakest right now as a district with our education. It would give us a larger school, meaning with that footprint, we would be able to have better labs, better theater, boost to the middle school's social and emotional needs at that area, and allows for more parity within the district. Also with that, if all the money's going to the new school and we need to move funds, we're gonna need to do it at the pre-K level because we're going to need to do a lot of renovation at McCarthy in order to lower and make sure we have enough availability to make sure we can reach all of the, the needs of the schools in one fell swoop.
Did you talk at all about the scale of a four-grade school and the potential cost of the scale of such a project?
I can't say necessarily cost, but definitely the size, and we understand that that's a behemoth, but we're, we're at a town where we're growing, so we're gonna have to feel it somewhere. No matter, no matter where we're gonna do this, we're gonna run into some crossroads.
Does your group agree that if, if that were a path forward, that it would need to be broken down into two halves or-
Yes.
Two schools within a school in order to make that viable?
Yes. Yep.
Great, thank you. Hang your results up there. Are you guys ready? Who's your spokesperson? I don't have any straws. Thank you.
All right, so we thought that of the five presented options, option four actually presented the greatest benefit to all of the levels in the district. It would alleviate some of the pressure in elementary.
Remind us what option four was, we've never heard that from you.
Oh, option four would be of grade four, five, and six at Parker. But one of the disadvantages would be that then after going to school up to grade six in the brand-new building with the beautiful facilities, that students would transfer to a building that's not as new. So one thing that we talked about as a separate option, option six, that we wondered if you had considered, is we did like option five, the new six-to-eight building at Parker. And then thinking about how that could potentially alleviate some of the issues at elementary with the overcrowding, could we maybe have a four and five building at the McCarthy site? And that's, that's what we have. Thank you.
So a couple of quick clarifications. Can you guys hang your results up on the wall? In any of the elementary school potential projects downstream, there could be grade reconfigurations among them. For example, five years ago, there was some exploration of pre-K two, and then three, five, so you would have two of each of those in the district rather than four that have all the same grades across the district. And so you're, in your option six, that could be a scenario for the second, third, fourth project in town to change the grade configuration at just the elementary level. The other thing we want to clarify, several groups now have said at Parker, we want to be careful to divorce Parker as the priority that's being submitted as a statement of interest from where a resulting project would go. We would have a responsibility to explore renovation, renovation addition, and new construction, but new construction could go somewhere else, could go on a site yet to be determined. So it's not necessarily a predetermined fact that a new building would need to go on the Parker site. So we just wanted to offer that clarification. Did you guys have anything to report out?
Just briefly. The, thank you. Thank you, Paul. So we actually talked about and explored option four as kind of the priority, the four, five, six. I think the, the other one we were looking at was the option three, the five to eight. I think we were just a little concerned about the size of the building, you know, 1,500 kids at the middle school level in the same facility. Even to us, felt a little different than 1,500, say, high school kids, just because of maturity and age development or whatnot. From a fiscal standpoint, building that big of a middle school would almost be the equivalent to building a high school, so funding-wise, that was a little bit of a concern for us. When we looked at options four and five, I think the four, five, six just seemed to be more aligned with like our elementary programming. Five, six, we do treat more like elementary school as far as curriculum and whatnot. And as a parent, having, say, if you're gonna have to have one grade level move, having a fourth-grade student move up with fifth and sixth seemed to be more appealing than having a sixth-grade student have to move up with seventh and eighth. So that was our option, but we did, we didn't really explore the first two. They didn't work for us. Four was what we honed in on, talked about three, and then just preferred that grade configuration, four, five, six, over six, seven, eight. Thank you.
I won't ask you guys to post your results. Who's your spokesperson over here?
Hi. So we were a hard no for one and two. We didn't feel like it would address the overcrowding at the elementary schools. The option we chose was number three because it was a building for everyone. We thought we could create a five, six portion of the building and seven, eight. It would address all of the elementary school overcrowding and also provide an option for a pre-K. The option four and five, our concerns was, were that it didn't address pre-K in option four, and we weren't sure that it would definitely address the overcrowding at the elementary schools.
Just another, thank you. If you guys could put your work up there. Just another quick clarification. For the two options that didn't have elementary school grades in the McCarthy, on the McCarthy site, doesn't necessarily mean that pre-K couldn't eventually be in one of the elementary schools. It's just that it wouldn't have an immediate ability to move into one of the elementary schools because those projects would likely happen later in the sequence. But that particular, those two particular options doesn't necessarily prevent pre-K from eventually being moved out of Westland's and into one of the other buildings. Okay, this group, who's gonna be your spokesperson? David? Oh, Ginger?
So, I'm not sure that we really came to a pick, but, hold on, sorry, we're stuck to the table. There we go. But we did spend quite a bit of time talking about options one and two, and, and sort of three, where we started pulling the, the grades together and then splitting them out. So I'll talk a little bit about the, this because I think it, it really flows in. It's the, you know, we agree with everybody else with this idea of getting some of our, our younger folks, our younger students pulled to an environment where they can really be focused on away from the, the really changing nature of the way our seventh and eighth graders have to perform and, and their, the whole curriculum is significantly different at that point. that point. So we, with the first two options, we felt there were some good pluses in terms of, you know, busing stays the same, your staffing kind of stays the same. It gives you this cohesive community of kids in bigger groups of the same grades, whereas we don't end up with this Parker versus McCarthy thing that sometimes happens of, wait a minute, what are they doing over there, that same subject? So those are good things that come from one and two, but in the end, the elementary schools not being helped was a huge thing. We said, you know, that's just not enough if we're talking about what is this, this potential new building going to be? Option, oh, go ahead.
What you mean is not being helped, not being helped as a result of the first project?
Correct.
Correct. There's no immediate.
Yes, not being helped as a result of the first project. Exactly. And so this is where option three started really getting the juices flowing for us in terms of echoing some of the things that people have said so far, this two schools in one, being able to bring all these kids together, free up space in some of these other areas, but potentially be able to design a school where we are able to achieve options one and two, the advantages of options one and two in a single, I don't want to say single space, but a single campus, let's call it. Additionally, adding one elementary school, possibly more, as a result of building some sort of five through eight facility really allows us to prepare at the elementary school for spreading things out with what we've got as well as pre-K, if it needs to go someplace, whether it's expanding from CHIPS or whatever. And really, we put it in blue because it really is. It's this, the idea of giving those elementary schools the relief so that we can continue to, to meet that at those lower levels and still bring this cohesive community and non-competition between two middle schools. We talked briefly about options four and five, but again, I'm not sure that they had as much fervor in our discussion as, as option three did. But, you know, we get some of the same elements of things, you know, with option five having the disadvantage of sixth grade not being as good with seventh and eighth grade as, for instance, four through six, so.
Thank you. And if you could hang both of those up there for folks to see. And our last group? Brian, are you going to be the spokesperson or are you going to be the, oh, Amy's going to be the spokesperson.
All right. We had a lot of discussion and ultimately, we kind of liked both option three and five the best. The reasonings behind that is it did, both did accommodate for pre-K. We talked a little bit about it being less of a transition for students to go into a building for two years and into another building two years later, where these options would have three grades and then, or four grades in one building. Someone brought up, it might be easier for transportation and busing with these options. It alleviated the overcrowding in the middle school, especially at Parker, and then alleviates the, and impacts the, right away, the overcrowding in the elementary schools. We did talk a little bit about maintaining, you know, specialized programming or within the buildings because if we go to a five, six, and a seven, eight, right now, between Parker and McCarthy, we have some specialized programs, one at Parker, two at McCarthy, and we'd have to have all three in both buildings to span just the two grade levels, so that could impact some cost. We did ultimately kind of talk about the fact that while we liked option three, having one bigger school divided into like almost two separate five, six, seven, eight type buildings on one campus, that, you know, it might be a better idea to get town support behind option five where the overall cost of the building would be a less, you know, cost to swallow and might make that support a little easier to get.
And if you guys could post over there. So it sounds like there's a couple of themes emerging, one of which is the same desire that existed five years ago to attach pre-K to something, sounds like it still exists. And if there's any opportunity to get pre-K attached to an elementary school or to an early elementary, there's still a desire to do that as a result of whatever the priority project turns out to be. Did we, did we hear that correctly? I see a lot of heads going up and down. The other thing that I think was really strong was sort of one of the objectives we had put up before we started the exercise, that there needs to be an immediate impact downstream at the elementary level as a result of whatever the priority project is. And so even if we can impact all the students in some specific grades, that that's not enough, that we also need to impact the elementary students in the, in the lower grades. Let me ask this question. Even though we only gave you sort of Parker-focused options tonight, is there still an appetite to pursue a high school project for another couple of insert number of years here before the district tries something else as the focus? Anybody want to respond to that? Yeah?
I think bottom line, to be fiscally responsible, we need to go for the one that's going to get us the most dollars as soon as possible. And if it impacts and gives us the most bang for our buck, we just need to take emotion out of it and say, this is where we can get it, we need to get it fast, and we need to get it done. I think that's kind of what we need, what we need to do.
Can I paraphrase that slightly differently and say, your suggestion is to pursue the thing that's the most likely to get MSBA support, knowing that it's not guaranteed? Okay? Any, yes?
Maybe I have a counter question or comment here.
Sure.
Even if we do the priority project, one of the things we have to know in, as a town, is we have to fund all the other upgrades that follow. This is a 30-year, 50-year, 60-year marathon, not a five-year thing. So we, maybe from a town perspective, from capital planning or everything else, we need to know what the scope of this is going to end up being potentially, so that people can see how are we going to structure, what we're going to structure. And so we might have to think through, whatever we select today, we need to think through a couple of more options downstream to make that case more viable or palatable within the town.
Would it, I'm going to piggyback on that a little bit. Would it be appropriate to say that the town and its citizens could benefit from a holistic view of the entire plan, not an exclusive focus on whatever the first step is?
Yes.
And so even if, even if it's a 40-year plan, to say, this is our intent. We're going to do this first and then we're going to attempt to do these things over some time horizon moving forward. I see some heads going up and down. For at least a consensus in the room, is that, is that a fair statement? Okay?
I'll even go so far as to say, I don't think that any plan succeeds without that. The people who are going to put up the biggest objections are the ones that are, to any new building, are going to say, but we just built the high school. Right? It's, we hear that over and over. Well, but the high school's fine. We just built it. And even now, asking that question about whether or not we would rather do the high school or the, or the a priority project like a middle school or reconfiguration, at least for me, my question, my response was immediately in my head, it depends. Because it depends on what are you trickling down? I don't, they said after the five years, I don't think people can conceptualize in this way without seeing that multi-step. If we do this, it means this, that, and the other thing.
Any other responses to that inquiry? Oh, yes. Paul?
So I would say, I'm, you know, part of me would say, are there other projects that have, so first of all, I'm a fan of putting all your weight behind one arrow. Okay? That's usually, you know, especially when you have a lot of things to do, you can be so easily defocused. So I think this is a really great arrow and fully in support and great job tonight, by the way. So, but I'm kind of new to all the problem statements and what I'm wondering is, is there a place on the town site where I could go and read more and say, you know, I really think maybe we should, we have a reason to invest in something in the high school and event, like, do we have any very high-risk items that would, I guess that's the part I don't have visibility to, but it's probably somewhere in somebody's data.
Yeah, probably the closest thing that you're referencing is this capital improvement plan that we identified, you know, where are hazardous materials, which systems and components are near the end of their useful life, which things need to be addressed to make, you know, buildings warm, safe, and dry, energy efficient, safe and secure, those kinds of issues. And that list does exist and the district and the town have done a really good job of moving through that list. And some of the improvements you've seen over the last five years are a direct result of that work and that work continues. There may also be things, and this is part of our next steps, that depending on how the outcomes of this study go in the upcoming weeks, there may be actions that can be taken as smaller-scale projects to improve the condition outside of whatever the priority project would be. And that could take a bunch of different flavors. We don't know exactly what they are yet, but there are those kinds of items as well. So in terms of our next steps, right, we have a couple of school committee updates upcoming and we're going to try to close out this work by the end of the year, but the design team has still a lot of work to do to digest your input, to try to sequence some of these options and create others in the weeks to come. So with that, any, yes?
Do have a question about how, like looking at school committee update and where this is going. Planning board for the town and other, like, how are we, how is this project being discussed at other, in other, other areas of the town? Because if they're approving new sites, if there's going to be new building in the town, that's going to directly impact how we're looking at this. And I, I do feel that that's an overall problem, is that I don't feel anybody who's in this room right now necessarily has all of the input about, did you know this is going to be coming to the table next week where they could be approving more building at a certain site and that's going to impact the amount of more people coming into the district? So, you know, what, how are we addressing these sort of different bubbles within the town?
Dr. Lang, do you want to respond to that at all?
Something like this, to just kind of keep the town in the loop with regard to kind of what we're thinking or what we're even planning. We typically, like, say, a fall town meeting or like this project where it'll be ending in the springtime or the winter. At the opening of town meeting, they usually do reports and updates from what different departments are working on. So we would give an update to town meeting so that they could kind of hear about this particular work. I think we haven't gotten to the point where, you know, we would actually say notify a planning board or something like that around a new project is because we haven't made it that far down the pipeline yet. And even if we, we apply to MSBA, we get invited in for the discussion, you're still looking at an 18- to 24-month window there where you're doing your feasibility study, you're actually going out at that point to engage the different town boards to figure out where there is viable space. Do you do something onsite? Do you look for another site? That's a little bit further down the road. That'd be my answer for you.
I'll just add to that.
Can I add one quick other thing? Not to cut you off. So I forget, someone asked about the plan we had done in 2015, 16. You would be able to find that on our website. So if you Google, I forget exactly the term of it, but facilities assessment, facility master plan, that would come up. There's a different section of the site and I'll try to figure if I can link them because we have the year-to-year projects that we update that would have come from that plan. So you can kind of see what the plan said and what we actually got accomplished. I don't think they're in the same place, so I'll try to figure out a way to link those on the site. Anything that was in the master plan that we didn't get done, obviously with that facility assessment, didn't get any better in time, so that would still be projects that are on the kind of to-do list. But that would give you a good frame of reference to where we're at. Sorry, you're up, Jason.
If I understood your question, part of what you're asking is about future development in town and how that might impact the size or the number of students that a project needs to accommodate. The good news on that front is that as part of this eligibility period and the feasibility study that Dr. Lang was referencing, the MSBA and the town typically do new forecasts right before, you know, any project gets executed. And at that time, you would want to discuss potential and existing developments that are happening around town and take those into consideration at that moment. So there is that opportunity to have those kinds of discussions as the process unfolds before anything, any shovels go in the ground. Yes?
Just one final thing, and I think Laura and I come from the same position on this, which is we both sit at town meeting, we both watch DPW start talking about their, doing their planning board five-year master plan right now that tells us where we're going to have sidewalks put in. Those things are going to continue to happen and continue to move forward and every time we see those things come up, we ask, hey, did you guys call the school department and find out whether we need sidewalks? And their answer is, no. So I think, Laura, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what we're, we're saying is, is more, less the question of how are you coordinating it and more of, please start coordinating it so that we're not on the receiving end of that.
Fair enough. Well, we want to thank everybody for coming tonight. I apologize, we did not do a good job of getting you out of here in 90 minutes. We're going to take that as a success, though, because the conversation was so rich and thoughtful. So we will continue to update everyone. If you have any final questions or comments, Michelle and I will linger around a little bit. Dr. Lang, do you have anything?
Thank you everyone very much for coming, very much appreciate the input.
All right, thank you, everyone.